Good evening. My name is Sylvia Anderson and with me is Chris Adams and we are the co-chairs for the Community Streets Initiative Task Force. And we're glad you're here this evening. We want to hear what you have to say. We're here to listen. Before we start this evening, I want to say a few words about the task force, who we are and what our mission is, and when we expect to finish our report. The task force is composed of 23 Everett citizens appointed by Mayor Stephenson earlier this year. We are an advisory group. The members of the task force represent a really wide range of perspectives and experiences. We have residents, business leaders, and leaders of many of our human services and housing organizations here in the city. You can see the names of all of our members, our meeting agendas and materials, as well as videos of our meetings on the city's website. Tonight, however, is not an official meeting of the task force, but several members are here to listen. I'll mention them by name and ask them to either stand or raise their hands to be identified. They are Kent Stark, Craig Scottall, Joyce Stewart, Dan Templeton, John Hall, Nora Beggs, David Hall, and Georgia D. McLeod. Thank you, members. We're transcribing the comments from tonight's meeting and will provide those notes to all members of the task force. The task force is supported by members of the city and county government. From the county, we have Chef Trendary and Kent Stark, the head of county's Human Service Department. From the city of Everett, we have Chief Dan Templeton, the Deputy Fire Chief Bob Downey, the city's Economic Development Director Lanny McMullin, and the Deputy City Attorney David Hall. These governmental leaders do not have a vote on the task force, but they join us at the table in our discussions. We're grateful for their time and input. Several of them are here tonight. I don't have the list, but they're here. You guys want to wave? There you go. Okay. Thank you. The mission of the task force is to develop recommendations back to the city and the community to address the challenges of the street-level social issues in Everett's commercial core areas. As we talk about street-level social issues at the task force, we are talking about several issues: creating vital, safe, desirable commercial core areas, street crime, public safety, homelessness, shelter and housing, mental illness, drug addiction, public spaces, and social services affecting these. We're not quite halfway through our work. We have five remaining task force meetings scheduled and plan to deliver our recommendations to the city and community by the end of November. We want to get your input to help us inform our discussion and our recommendations. Again, thank you for sharing your time.
I'm going to switch gears just a little bit. My name is Chris Adams and I want to talk a little bit about the process tonight. We're going to -- the public comment process here is important in terms of the steps that we're taking to make sure that we get multiple types of input into the task force. The way that we're going to conduct tonight is all the comments are going to be transcribed. You can see that we're obviously filming tonight. Members of the -- members of the task force are going to receive the transcript from tonight in the minutes, so that way they get these comments as part of the discussions that they have. If you haven't already and you want to speak, we have sign-ups in the back. When you raise your hand, go talk to Wendy. She'll give you the forms, so that way you can fill that out and make sure that you're on the list. We'll call speakers in the order that we received the sign-ups. So I have, I believe, six people signed up at this point. We'd love to have more, so if you'd like to sign up as we go through the process, feel free to go back and talk to Wendy and get your name on the list and fill out one of the forms. We're going to ask that everyone keep their comments to about three minutes. We'll remind you if you go over three minutes, but if you could, keep it in that general range. And please state your name and address for the record when you go up there. One other real quick thing that Sylvia and I wanted to clarify is we are obviously representatives of the task force. We're representatives of the task force here tonight, but we're not speaking for the task force in terms of providing comment or questions to the comments that you provide tonight. We really want to create a record of your comments and recommendations and ideas that we take back to the task force. So if you are expecting to ask us a question, just understand that we're not expecting to necessarily answer that question back, but feel free to ask it. We'll make sure it gets communicated back to the task force. I just wanted to make sure you knew that upfront. We're planning on going to nine o'clock. At this point, based on the number of people signed up, we probably won't get all the way there, but if we do go all the way to nine o'clock and we have enough people sign up, our plan is to stop at that point. So I wanted to give you that warning, too. And we really appreciate everyone coming and being part of the process. So with that, we'll go ahead and start. First one is Patricia Rudd. Patricia, if you'd come up to the podium, give us your name and address.
My name is Patricia Rudd, spelling R-U-D-D, and I live at 2513 Cedar in Everett. I've been a resident of Everett for a number of years since 1968. The reason I'm here is because I am a member of the Spirit of Grace United Methodist Church, most commonly known as First Methodist located at 35th and Colby. For three years, we had a community dinner on Wednesdays at 6:00, followed by worship service and singing. We have parish nurses available, also some clothing and toilet items for those in need. We stopped our feeding program this summer due to the used drug needles and refuse that were left in our grounds. We have neighborhood children that attend our church, participate in activity nights, and use our basket park at all times. We felt we could not jeopardize the safety of our youth. We hope to reconsider the return of the feeding program once we can figure out how to handle the 5% of the people using drugs that affected the 95% that ate at our dinner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next name on the list is Bill Stackit. Did I say it wrong? Sorry, I'm sorry. I read the H as an S, I apologize.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Reverend Bill Curlinhackett. I direct the Interfaith Task Force on Homelessness and I'm co-chairing the latest permutation of the Homeless Policy Task Force, which is continuing in light of the addition of a partnership to End Homelessness Group that some folks in this room are probably on. One of the things that we've been doing in King County, and I live in Snohomish County, so I spend a fair amount of my time here working on these issues here, is looking out for the unsheltered homeless. That seems to be what a good share of this conversation is about. Years ago, we were watching Housing First be discussed, and one of the terms we thought was important to lift up was housing tonight, because too often we weren't looking at remedies for tonight. Last year's one-night count in both King and Snohomish was in double digits, and we know those are always undercounts. And so in King County, we started a crisis response. That was what it was called. It came out of the governing board, which is the equivalent of the P-E-H here. And there have been committees meeting about how to deal with single adult homelessness. As you know, Gates has helped with family homelessness and the youth initiatives are spreading, but single adult homelessness still escapes remedies. So I'm going to leave this copy with you, but there's four recommendations that at least I want to lift up. One is to create better outreach and to give the outreach workers who are working on the street the capacity. The phrase is to have a checkbook, so that they can do something if need be, especially in the winter months, that brings someone out of harm's way and into safety. There's various ways that is going to play out perhaps, but the main goal is more outreach. And that's for single adults, not just youth. Supporting long-term shelter stayers to get them moved into more appropriate housing through rental subsidies and support services. One of the things that we have in King County is some faith communities are actually providing those support services in terms of rental subsidies. It doesn't always have to just come from the government, because we know those funds, and as you have heard, those funds are always limited, and everybody's battling over how to use them, and they don't often get used for these purposes for the unsheltered. The third crisis response is to expand existing shelters, and that is controversial. I mean, we're battling government and business and other places, like in Kent, Washington, where we're looking at providing a no-cost-to-the-government shelter, and the argument is where it would be that wouldn't offend business. That may sound familiar, but it's happening all over the place. The reality is a safe place at night is a pathway to stability. You begin to meet people who you have the chance to exit homelessness. And the last one is creating a better willingness to do interim survival mechanisms. One of the first things I did in Snohomish County was helped Linwood write its tent city ordinance. And the first thing I said to the council was, I think Mark was on the council at the time, was, "You're never going to use this, but if you're going to have one, you better do it right." And so they didn't vote that night, and the planning director and I and others met. So there are some cities that have encampment ordinances. I don't think there's any formal encampments in this county. There's very little being done on vehicle camping. Those things are happening in King County, but they're only meant as stopgap measures to get people in touch with ways to exit homelessness. None of them can be permanent, but if you provide someone a safe place, they have the opportunity then, and there's more resources through faith communities and others that can be brought to bear to help these folks exit homelessness. And it also helps civility and neighborliness. It's built on a model, as we were just talking about, of a relationship at the core, which isn't always the way it works structurally for the rest of the system. So I encourage that maybe you can pass this out. You can ask Mark Pandem if you have permission to pass it around, but I think you want to really be informed about what other discussions are going on nearby, because we're dealing with the same things. Thirty-nine cities in King County and everyone has a mind of its own. Thank you.
All right, the next name is Bob Jackson.
I am Bob Jackson. I live at 717-33rd Street here in Everett. And first of all, I just appreciate very much all these 23 members that are volunteering their time to tackle this issue. There is really nothing more important than what you're doing that I can see in the city right now, so I appreciate it. Long-term, I think that over the last four weeks, that the goal of housing first has surfaced again and again, and I think you're right on track, at least for this member of the public. That's exactly where you should be focusing on. One of the people brought with them to one of the meetings, a list like this of all the meals that were served on different days of the week and different organizations around town. I know the one I've got is from a few years ago by a group called Food Pages of Snohomish County Dog at Org. And if you go to their website now, I think that's expired, but I would love to see something like this in a format that people on the street could easily carry with them. This is just a little six-sided brochure, I guess you'd call it, on fairly stiff paper that may be a little easier for a person in need to hang on to. And I would like to see something like this, maybe get updated every three months, six months, whatever is practical, but you all know that those programs change dates and change locations from time to time. And if we could stay current with this, so that people in various organizations could have these on their desks and give them to people in need. We're going to be dealing with the people on the street for a long time, and the more that we can help them, the better. I would like to see it contain a map like was talked about one time, but also contain other services besides food, shelter, laundry, showers, public restrooms, all of this. I know it's a challenge to get it on a small sheet like this, but I think it would help me. I bumped into a lot of people when I maintained Forgotten Creek, that I would like to be able to give something like this to. So that's it. Thanks.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Mark Smith. I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Consortium of Everett and Snohomish County, and as such, my office works on affordable housing issues throughout the county, working with legislators and stakeholders, community organizations, and faith groups. Appreciate all the time that the task force's members have taken on this subject. It's a very difficult subject. There are competing interests, and anytime there are competing interests, there is probably not one solution that's going to make everybody happy. As a former elected official, as Reverend Curlinhackett pointed out, I always knew I was doing a good job if the majority of the people were mad at me. That was my litmus test. That was a joke, by the way. Going to these community task force, Community Streets Initiative meetings, there has been a constant theme that has come out, and that theme is the need for more housing, the need for more beds. And by housing, I mean everything from the emergency one-night shelter beds to long-term permanent supportive housing for people who can live somewhat independently. There's a whole spectrum of that. Catholic Community Services is doing a remarkable job with their Housing First program. They don't have enough beds. Everett Gospel Mission doesn't have enough beds. Compass Health, a representative of Compass Health stood up here last week and talked about 500 people, mentally ill people on their waiting list for permanent, long-term housing. They also talked about turning away 700 people from triage in the last year. And triage is for people who are having immediate significant issues right now, and they've been delivered there by police, they've been delivered there by EMS, they've been delivered by household members, and they turn them away because there's not enough beds. Cocoon House, which works with street youth, and it sometimes takes them two, three, four years to create enough of a relationship with the street youth for them to come to Cocoon House, has a lack of beds. They talked about particularly for the 18- to 24-year-old age range, which may be, it makes up certainly a good percentage of the people who some of the businesses are having issues with. These are people that have nowhere to go. The Supreme Court recently handed down their psychiatric boarding ruling, which says we can't use hospitals for psychiatric care anymore. A correct ruling, in my opinion, but there's nowhere for these people to go. There's a three- to four-year waiting list at public housing authorities. The county recently released its Housing Report, Housing Characteristics and Needs in Snohomish County, which projected out to 2035 population growth, and it says the county will need 22,000 new units of affordable housing by 2035. That's for people, for households, not for people, for households who make less than 50% of the area median income. In Snohomish County, that's $68,000 a year, which means they're making less than $34,000 a year to house, clothe, and feed their family, whether that's one person or five people or six people with children. Everett's, I'm not going to say portion, because there's a lot of discussion about how that all works out. Where do those 22,000 units get built or acquired and rehoused? But Everett's, if you look strictly at population, Everett's portion of that would be 5,600 new units by 2035. That's a dauntingly expensive proposition, and it doesn't include what the current need is now. One way to address that is a housing levy in the city of Everett or the county-wide. That's a very unpalatable figure. I'm no longer in elected office or running for elected office, so I can say these kinds of things publicly now. And hope that if I ever do run again, nobody's going to have this tape. That was another joke. It's okay to laugh. A housing levy at 10 cents per $1,000 of assessed value has the ability to, over 10 years, in Snohomish County, which is what the state authorizes a housing levy for, has the ability to leverage private equity at five to one and build upwards of 4,000 to 5,000 units of new housing in 10 years. That's a significant chunk out of the 22,000, bringing it down to the local level. And for businesses, Mr. Scottall and Renee, I'm sorry, I forgot her last name, from Renee spoke very eloquently, I thought, at their meeting about the issues that businesses face with people. Nobody wants to go to work in the morning and have to sweep somebody off their doorstep or have to sweep up after somebody who has slept in front of their business. However, Everett is a big city with some big city issues. They have wonderful plans for downtown development. As those development plans come to fruition, and we've started to see that with the Patala Village and others, you will see more big city issues. Everett is no longer the small sleepy mill town that it used to be, and I don't live in Everett. I've lived in Linwood most of my life, and Linwood has changed as well. Down in Seattle, I'm sorry, I started to say, Mr. Scottall made a comment, and I don't mean to pick on you at all, but it was a comment that there aren't any churches in Seattle that do feeding programs. And to a certain extent, he's correct, and that's because churches can't afford to be in downtown Seattle, quite frankly, and many of them have moved out. But there is a program, and I want to offer this as a suggestion for the task force to look at. There is a program in Seattle called OSL. Used to be known as Operation SAP Lunch. And what they do is they gather all of the faith communities, all of the social service organizations that want to provide these meals into one physical site, and they provide management of the outdoor meal site for the city of Seattle, providing quality control security in an exploitation-free environment. They're located at 6th and Columbia, and they serve three meals a day, seven days a week. That might be an option for the city of Everett. Would allow faith communities to fulfill their religious mission of ministering to the poor and the homeless. There would have to be a compromise, because they're not going to be able to provide services there, religious services, more than likely. It would require help from the city of Everett, finding a physical location. There's also a program by the Metropolitan Improvement District of downtown Seattle, and the YMCA in downtown Seattle used to do this as well. I worked there about 30 years ago, where they would have a job training program, and there are higher youth at risk to clean the streets, to sweep the streets. That may be something that the Everett Downtown Association wants to look at. If you're going to have to clean up after people who have used the outside of your facility for things you don't want them to use it for, maybe there's a way to turn that into a positive. The other thing that's needed is a day center for the homeless. Right? Where do they go? I mean, they may be homeless, but they're still social human beings. They want to talk to their friends, they want to congregate. Where do they go? Currently, there is no place for them to go. A day center that offers services may be an opportunity to do that. I think I've gone way over my time. I appreciate your indulgence. I just want to say that when I talk to, I very much appreciate the tenor and the tone of the conversation from the businesses, as well as the social service organizations and the faith communities at these meetings. The tone has been one of trying to find a solution that works for most people that doesn't punish, because too often that's what we end up doing, is punishing the homeless because they're homeless. And this, the police chief will say, and the sheriff will say, "We can't criminalize homelessness. It simply costs too much money, and it's not the right thing to do." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not sure I'm going to say this name right. Nancy Fisher?
Perhaps I should write my name.
Sorry.
That's all right.
So you'll tell me what it really is.
My name is Nancy Fisher. I live in the 2500th block of Rucker. I moved into the downtown core in Everett 14 months ago. Before that, I lived in a small little rambler in the Mill Creek area, in a quiet little neighborhood. I moved to the downtown core for the view. I didn't realize I was also moving for the number of associations that I was going to have with people. I thought that it would be a wonderful place for me. I would get up in the morning, I would walk the 11 blocks to the senior center, I would spend my time there with what I call my homies, and then I would walk home, and it would be such good exercise. What I found is that my neighborhood is rife with people who panhandle and people who simply loiter. And I am not against homeless people. I really am not. I've come out of social service, and I've worked for a long time in social service here in Snohomish County. But we are leaving something greatly, we are leaving a hole in our society that people are falling through. They are falling through in great numbers. When I go to the Safeway store and I go to QFC, and there is a dedicated place for a police cruiser to park, there is something wrong with what is going on in downtown Everett. I live a block from the library, and I like to read. I go to the library a lot. On Sunday afternoon, I walk to the library, and there are three elevator entrances. One is on the top level to get out and go into the library. The other, the next one down is at an area where people aren't there very often, because the trucks come in. And the bottom level is where people park and go and use that. But on Sunday, I walked partway up Everett Avenue and in where the trucks were, and when I came to the area, I was going to take the elevator up, and there were a gaggle of homeless people sitting where I couldn't see them, and I didn't know what they were doing. And I was really intimidated. I walked and used the stairs instead. There is something wrong when, when outside of our public library, I get panhandled for the use of my cellphone for some change, for a buck or two. And I'm 71 years old, and I don't want that to happen. And I'd like you to make, I'd like there to be a place for these people to be. I care for them. I serve lunch at the Everett Gospel Mission once a month. I am not a nice person, but some of us have to, we have to have the right to have the street, too. So I'd like you to take that. I really like the idea of a day program. I believe in day treatment beyond anything. A place to go where you are warm, where someone will talk to you, where you can see your friends, where you can have a cup of coffee, where you can be for the day is really important. I would like to see money come to that. Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind going up to the microphone, I apologize, just so we can get it on the record.
My comments were questions. I live at 2929 Hoyt Avenue, and I think someone can just read them and then answer them for me. So they don't really go with these other comments.
Thank you very much. I believe you submitted some written comments, and we'll make sure that goes back to the task force. Perfect questions. Okay, thank you.
Jason M.O.H.N.?
My name is Jason Moon. I live at 3431 Oaks Avenue, and I'm also the pastor of First Covenant Church, which is at 4502 Rucker Avenue. I've been pastor there for three years, and about three years ago, we started a community meal that we eventually called The Cove. This last summer, we stopped serving the community meal for a couple reasons. We recognized that the approach that we were taking was simply not right. Something was wrong about it, but we didn't know exactly what that was. Our free meal wasn't financially sustainable, even though we had an amazing amount of community support. And our volunteers were quickly becoming burnt out, just with the weight of the responsibility and the needs in our community. We decided to study a book called When Helping Hurts. It's by Colbert and Fickert. This book has opened our eyes to the reasons behind our feelings of unease about our community meal. We were helping in a way that was hurting those we were trying to help, and we were hurting ourselves. This book, from an organization called the Chalmers Institute, gave us a bunch of great ideas about how to help our community in a more sustainable... gave us a bunch of great ideas about how to help our community in a more sustainable and genuinely productive way. Here's a summary of what we learned. There is a right and a wrong way to serve people who have needs, especially needs of material poverty. The materially wealthy people think that material poverty can be solved by giving people stuff. But that's not always the best way to help. Poverty is rooted in broken relationships, broken relationships with God and neighbor, with self, with creation. And we learned that everyone experiences some kind of poverty. We're all impoverished in some ways. For our church, many of us are relationally impoverished. We just don't have enough time to get to know each other well. And one of the greatest blessings of serving to sit-down breakfast at our church has been getting to know people well, spending a lot of time with each other, and giving the gift of listening to one another. Most of materially wealthy people in the world don't have that kind of time for relationship. And so it's been a really a great blessing to get to know the materially poor in our neighborhood. We've also learned that there are better, more productive ways to serve than just giving stuff away. We've learned that earning what you have brings dignity and worth to people and worth to their things. Most people are looking for a way to contribute something of value to our community, and they just need more accessible opportunities to do that. We've learned that we need deeper partnerships within our faith communities, and that Everett needs to share best practices with each other, especially in the churches. We're all serving a consistent group of about 200 people who rotate from meal to meal. And if we're still serving these same 200 people 12 months later, then we're failing our responsibility at alleviating poverty. We're actually then just aiding it. We've learned that treating the symptoms of poverty rather than the root cause is a common mistake that almost all the organizations in our community make. And if we really want to invest in poverty, we have to invest long-term. We are interested in starting a movement among our faith communities towards best practices. We can do better at this. And our scriptures call us to a higher standing of, a standard of serving one another, more than just handing out free meals. As a church, we're interested in being a part of the solution and not contributing to the problem. And we see how free meals with no strings attached does contribute to the problems in our community, especially around drug use and homelessness. Blinded by compassion, often free meal programs in our community are alleviating an important trigger in our society. It's the trigger of hunger. We are pacifying people by presenting them with food, with something they could do themselves. Some people need to feel hungry sometimes, especially when they're not working by choice or they're spending their money on drugs and alcohol. Experiencing hunger will motivate people towards making better choices with their resources. Hunger will drive most mentally capable and physically able people towards healthier choices. As a community, we need to raise the bar in our feeding programs, to encourage people to seek employment, to reconnect with their faith community, their family networks, and to accept help from the various organizations in our community who are very talented at helping. For many, but not all, motivation to change the life, their lifestyle, is missing because they can eat a free meal in Everett whenever they want to, without much personal investment, without much involvement at all. They don't have to be involved in purchasing, preparing, cleaning up, or anything. We wouldn't allow that kind of behavior in our own homes. At least I know I wouldn't. So why do we allow this kind of freeloaded in our community? The problem with our community meals is rooted in a misguided approach. There's nothing wrong with feeding people. We just have to go about it in the right way. Compassionate people need to respond to situations like we have with the idea of human development, not crisis prevention, not relief. It's not a relief situation. As I've learned, there are plenty of people out on the streets who would like out of their current situation. They'd like to make better choices with their time if better choices were more accessible to them. We need more and more organizations, especially churches, partnering together and involved in mentoring, in job training, in addiction recovery, et cetera. If churches desire to continue to feed people, I believe that we should take on three simple principles that our church discovered in interactions with an organization called The Recovery Cafe in Seattle, Washington. Sidebar, Recovery Cafe Everett should open sometime in October. Here are their three basic principles for getting a free meal at their institution, or at their organization. First, they require 24 hours of sobriety to participate in the meal. Second, they require a participant to volunteer their time to support the meal in some way, even as minimal as sweeping the floors. Third, they require regular involvement in some kind of support group to be a regular at the meal. If our community would simply take on this approach and raise the bar to this level, we would experience a significant transformation in this city. And I would love to see that. I would love to be a part of that. We plan to relaunch our ministry, and we are committed to maintaining this kind of approach. In the meantime, we're looking to build partnerships with other churches and organizations to seek to alleviate the problems that come with poverty in our community. So if you're interested in joining us, please contact me. My name is Jason Moan. I work at First Covenant Church here in Everett.
Thank you very much. We had seven speakers. We've gone through that list. Is there anyone else that would like to sign up with Wendy in the back? Or if you'd like to raise your hand at this point, we'd love to... Great. Your name and address. Did you? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not sure this looked you up. Thank you for...
Hi, my name is Michael Point. I live at 2712 Pine Street, Everett. And I have a unique perspective on the problem of homelessness, on drug addiction. I've worked at the Cocoon House. I've worked at Everene Manor. I've done first step meetings in the VA and in psychiatric wards in hospitals. So I've seen the effects of living on the street, of living on the street with a drug addiction, and of living on the street with mental health issues. Put them all together, and you get a pretty bad situation. But there's some things I know. I know that it's not one size fits all. I understand that not every agency is well-equipped or properly funded to deal with all the problems they're dealing with right now, including the jails, including the police departments, law enforcement, who pretty much a lot of the time just find themselves not enforcing the laws or keeping our community safe, but acting as social workers. Because not enough money is put into properly funding the social workers that are required in our community, especially in times when things get rough, like now. There's always been homelessness. There's always been drug addiction. There's always been mental health issues. But there's always been at least a minimal amount of funding to cover it. Not anymore. Our economy is a big problem with what's happening right now in our city and in every city in our country. And we need to get the funding to deal with the problems. But people need, as Mr. Stark said, the basics of, I believe it was transit, housing, and mental health, to be able to meet their physical and psychological needs. I think that's what he said. Something like that, right? But we don't have the money for it. And a lot of people, the naysayers like to say, well, you know, they're just wasting that money. Well, they're not. They're not wasting that money. They're wasting that money on a lot of these agencies by doing all the paperwork that takes up about 60% of their time instead of dealing with the problem. I'd like to see some changes in that where the agencies get together and come up with one form that they give to all the people who fund them and just get it done and out of the way. Because there's certain things that need to be reported, and there's certain things that don't need to be reported. And I found that about 80% of the things we report don't need to be reported. And you're taking these people away from what they're hired to do, which is to take care of the client. That will go a long way to getting the help to the people that they need. But back to the economics of the situation. We can put Band-Aids on everything. And what's good about this is we're coming up and we're talking to one another, all the agencies, to try to come up with, finding solutions to some of these problems the best we can with what little we have. But until we have job opportunity, until we get our nation back on the right track and we start caring about the needs of the people first and not our financial needs, our financial needs, our personal financial needs, for what's best for me, you're going to remember that word "community," and "community" comes first. We don't see enough of that today. It has to be our community. We all have to work together to get it up on its feet. All of them, all the people. Crime, violent crime has dropped like 50% in like 20 years or 15 years or something. So we're making steps in the right direction as far as our enforcement goes. But there's still people out there who are committing these other crimes. The crimes are being committed because of stress, because they can't find a job, because they're living on the street. Now, that's where the housing comes in. Think about it. If everything else was wrong with your life, at least you have somewhere to go at night. Somewhere where you know you're safe. We're not going to be worried about getting mugged or left for dead in the woods or wake up to the sound of thunder and knowing that you're going to spend your night drenched. These are stressful situations that a lot of people not in this room go through every day. I see them every day. You know what really bugged me about a month ago? I owned a fire-wreath community coffee house on Colby Avenue. And I was working there late one night. And as I walked to the front of the store to get myself a coffee, I noticed that somebody had just laid down in front of my door and gone to sleep. And I was mad. I was mad as hell. But not because he was there, because we allow that to happen. We can't allow that to happen. We shouldn't have to allow it to happen, not in this country. We're supposed to be the greatest country in the world. Why do we act like it? Take care of the people who need us, the most needed among us. We're in a downward spiral right now because we don't take care of the people that have the most need. That's the end of all great countries and civilizations where they start forgetting about the most needed among us. So we have to look at it this way. We have to partner with each other, come up with solutions, and scrape by with what we have financially. And we got to demand from the people we elect to office to come up with the money so we can do the job. Create a place where people can clean themselves up for their drug addiction, or their alcohol addiction. Provide housing for people if they need it, and provide jobs for people and make them have a sense of worth. There's nobody out there who said, "I'm going to be homeless because I'm lazy." Not one person out there said that unless they have a mental health issue going on. You know, people want to feel some worth, some self-worth. They want to work hard, and they want to, at the end of the week, see that they have something to show for it. And that's not happening now. And then when you take people like that who are struggling and doing everything right, and all of a sudden feel no fault of their own, they find themselves out on the street, they fall through the cracks, we're throwing away a life when we do that. We can't throw away any more lives. They're too valuable. No matter what they look like, you know, no matter how dirty they look, no matter how drunk they are, they're somebody's kid. They're a life worth caring about. They're a life we have to take care of. Because if you're a religious person, and I'm not so much, I'm very spiritual, you know, that's what we're here for. It's time we started doing our job. And I don't want to hear any more excuses from anybody. You know, politicians need to fund these things. We need to create job opportunities. We need to supply treatment. We need to supply housing. We need to make sure that these people are able to get around to where they have to go to go to their job or go to their treatment or whatever. And I'm glad that this is happening. It was great to hear about this task force. And I think it's something that should be ongoing, ongoing all the time. And I think we should all get together to put the pressure on our politicians to come up with the real solutions, the money to fund the real solutions. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to provide a public comment? Your name and address.
My name is Chelsea. My address is 2802 Wetmore. My name is Chelsea, and I am here on behalf of Refuge Church and Trinity Lutheran College. I'm not here to offer the city a solution to this problem. The reason that I am here is to simply remind the city that they are real people and that they do mean something to somebody. They are somebody's brother, somebody's mom, or somebody's child. What kind of care would you want for your son or daughter? We have to remember that they are made of the same things that we are. They have muscles and bones and even the same heart as we do. It is only their brain that differs from us. And in all reality, we cannot place all the blame on them for that. To the city, I may be viewed as only one person. But to somebody who has nobody, one person is all it takes to impact their life. If you will not give them a chance, then give me one. I have been here only six months, and I've had great results with these people. I know that what I am doing is having a lasting impact. These people dream of the day that somebody normal says hello to them and recognizes them as a true human being. Whatever you decide, I just ask you to please keep this in mind. These people do matter to me. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Anybody else like to provide a public comment? All right. Yeah, absolutely. If you'd step up to the podium and give us your name and address.
Thank you that I could do this. My name is Fred Johns. I live at 1701 Wetmore Avenue, Everett. And through the Nazarene Church, I was involved with our Monday Lunch Program. And I did that for quite a few years. And I've seen some pretty hard cases come through. I've intervened in fights. I backed up other people when they had been attacked, had to call police in. But there's always that jewel, that little piece of gold that comes when one person, another person are fighting to bring themselves out of poverty. And those are the things that make it so worthwhile. And I talk in ignorance because I don't quite understand all that's going on with the task force. But I would like to speak for the Nazarene Church that I think we would like to know as much as we can and be as involved with this as we can. And I will appreciate the information being sent to our pastor at the Nazarene Church. Or you can talk to me after. But I do thank you. You're kind to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the comments. Would anyone else like to make a public comment? All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming to this. I know it takes time to come to a meeting like this in the evening and provide public comments. It's a really important part of the process to hear the points of view. And I promise you, Sylvia and I will make sure that the transcript from this and the video gets communicated back to the task force. And the points of view that were expressed tonight are part of our discussion as we go forward. Sylvia, I feel like we want to add to that.
Just appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.